Yes.
Um, Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Um, Ms. Seymour here. Mr. Mandelbaum is not here. Um, Mr. Lance is not here.
Ms. Gordon here.
We have four members present.
Hi.
Five? Where do you see five?
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep coming.
They're not counting. Ari's stuck in traffic.
I'll vote.
Uh, Mr. Mandelbaum is stuck in traffic right now.
I need other help, we can get one.
All right. Thank you everyone for the patience and also for the forum. Uh, the first item on our agenda is the question of budget adjustment. And again, you could see.
Dan, uh, President, uh, Mr. Pierce is here. Uh, this Financial Services Group, uh, actually what we have are third quarter budget adjustments for this to end, ending 2014. This is the second budget adjustment we've made in this year historically we tend to do prior to our audit, but, uh, Mr. Pierce, Personal Services Group, and then going through an exercise where we're at nine to ten months in April, and have been making, uh, this to bring forward a number of items for budget adjustment in preparation of the audit, which will probably start in September of this year.
Okay. Um, basically what we did, what I did was, and I guess I'll pass these out at the same time, is we also did, I did, um, a number of Mclager funds, which would be general fund, major, local street, parks and rec and library, and did a financial report that we're gonna start providing council every month now. But before I finish them all, go up, make sure that there's not any detail or something else anybody wants to see, we'd like you to review these draft forms so that you can express your opinion if you'd like it in a different format, you'd like to do something extra, anything like that. Okay. So, and this, since I didn't, they already drafted, this is why I didn't provide them for, um, anybody else, because until they've actually been approved and received and filed by council, I really don't wanna give out draft statements to the public until you guys have a chance to. Um, so, basically what we did when I went through the funds was I was looking for things that may have been mistakenly, or, you know, misremembered or clerical errors, because the last two budget seasons, especially the previous one, we kinda just mirrored the old budget, 'cause it was subsequent to Mr. Sharet's debt, and so there were a couple of things that I found that were adopted on one side of a fund, but not adopted on another, or we had revenues that because of the new ordinance, you saw, you know, you guys enacted, we had new revenues, and then the major street was just a reclassification. So, the first one, which was a million dollars on the major street side for the Evergreen Road project, there was a transfer from the Metro Act. Consistently, the Metro Act, which we get about $230,000 to $240,000 a year, we had been storing up that money for a major project. Originally, it was going to be, um, lighting, uh, street lighting in the nine mile DDA area up through here. That project would, never went away, because we were supposed to get a match with DTE, or it never came to fruition, 'cause the match for DTE went away. So, we've been sitting on a kind of a stockpile of money. Once we, we needed money for the Evergreen Road project, they approved the transfer in the major street from, from the Metro Act. What they didn't recognize was that is the restricted fund balance, and in order to get that money out there, I need a budget adjustment on the general fund side, which was not incorporated in the, the budget that we adopted. So, my first, uh, budget adjustment is just to actually recognize the use of the restricted fund balance from the Metro Act, and, and show the expenditure, which is a transfer to the major street funds. The second one, yes, like I said, the council passed an ordinance, um, guiding bonds that were held both in building and engineering. Um, basically, these were things that people filed for a bond, waiting for a CVO, if they got a CVO, then the bond would be refunded. If the CVO was never actually received, the new ordinance says that the city can take the bond back and, and record that as revenue. So, basically, we've shown about $950,000 of recorded recovered building permit fees, and $150,000 of recovered engineering permit fees. So, in order to not have our fees and permit line on the caper have a huge variance, we'd like to recognize this budget adjustment, so that it will be in line with what we've actually seen come in so far. The last one was, um, the anticipation, it also had to do with Evergreen Road. At the time that the budget was developed, we were not sure that we were going to be successful or not on the road millage. So, in order to make sure that there was an ample amount of money available for the Evergreen Road project, in case we did not get the millage, the budget includes a $3 million, $3,507,116, um, transfer from the LURF fund. Subsequent, of course, we were successful in getting our millage, we have now bonded in late April or early May, and received 47 million of, or 41 million in the first of the 99 projects. So, in other, in, in order to correct that, I want to change the transfer from LURF, and, you know, get rid of that, and actually show it as a transfer from the bond pro则s, which is showing up in the road bond construction. And I believe these three actions will assist us in, um, showing a better, I probably will become subsequent, we have not yet passed with some, some minor things, but these were the major things that I saw. I still have some questions about, um, a couple of departments and, and where they're gonna land at the end of the year, but for the most part, I've gone through the major funds, and everybody seems to be within range that they should be. Couple of them, I might need to talk to the administration about, revenues are pretty, pretty steady, and, um, there's usually a year lag, I mean, a year, a month or two lag in the revenues, so when you look at these reports, you, it's supposed to be like 83% of the year, you may see, like, the state's shared revenues in general funds only at 55. Well, we don't receive the last payment until August, so that will not be recorded until we do our accruals. So, what you'll be doing is getting an updated May for all the funds, and then Fred has asked for at least towards the end of July, a preliminary June, just to show where we're at, where, where we are at, and then I can actually, at that point, tell what I'm still waiting for, and that I know I'm gonna receive in August, so I can footnote all of that, so that we'll know exactly kind of where we're going to be, and it'll be much more transparent to you, when you, uh, you won't be receiving like a caper at the end of the year, saying this is the first time we've seen any of the results. So, basically, what I'm asking today is for you to, um, receive and file this, um, and I would ask that you would amend your agenda for the seven o'clock meeting, and add the budget adjustment, and approve the budget adjustment.
Counsel, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Prue.
With the, uh, the first item, uh, what, what happened with the DTE match?
That was, you know, it, quite frankly, that was with, this was with Bob Northrup, who was, has been gone for several years, and for some reason, it was this, this whole thing, the DDA was gonna kick in money, DTE, sorry, DTE was gonna kick in money, and we were gonna kick in Metro Act money, the DTE, they could never nail them down, and then the DDA started to not have as much money available, because their TIP went away, so it, it just kinda evaporated, and it, and the project, I mean, never went forward.
And you plan to revisit the project?
Well, again, that would be a public works thing, I don't, I mean, that's not something I just deal with the money, and if, if, if we get, like I said, $230,000, $230,000, we certainly could revisit that if there's money available in that, but again, right now, we're using that for roads, but yes, I understand what you're saying, it would be nice, it would be an amendment that would sort of lower everything, right? So, I, I would think that what we would do is refer that to the administrator for further, um, if that's okay with counsel.
The, uh, the last year, we, the streets, we've got a solid plan in streets, as well as our, uh, water and sanitary sewer. The next two areas in the public works arena that we're gonna focus on are storm and street lighting. And I can tell you, the street lighting, uh, we've got everything mapped out, who owns what, but you've got a, a lot of existing street lights that are older, that could probably be replaced with LED. We're trying to figure out how that funding is going to work. Let me also make comment on the Metro Act fund. I'm actually looking for an entity to audit the fund. Uh, I, the amount of fiber in here, and when you read the act, it, I believe Soundfield should be getting more money. And my staff person who's, works with that very closely, is in agreement, and, and is here tonight, um, when we did the audit of the cable, we saw the difference that that meant, another 60-some thousand came from AT&amp;T. So, there are a couple things, Metro Act, we've been getting this money, putting it in. Jim, what's the fund balance in there?
Probably close, well, after this transfer, it's gonna be down to at least, like, $900, something like that.
So, it's been building up, just very slowly, but when you look at the amount of fiber in our right, right away, the math doesn't quite add up, so there's gonna be a challenge. Actually, I spoke to our lobbyist a few weeks ago, um, I've been looking for someone to, to audit this. But the street lighting, you know, is, is a larger issue, because we've got some of the older lights on, uh, Telegram, you know, some we own, uh, some of the lean ones are , are owned, but there's no doubt we'd like to do more street lighting in, in certain parts of the city. Um, and I think the DDA is one of those areas, and as we go through the redevelopment of that area, I think street lighting needs to be stepped up. There are a lot of communities that are moving street lighting to 100% special assessment, uh, as a way to offset the cost. So, in the next year, stormwater, street lighting, this, uh, segue on street lighting, on stormwater, a FEMA grant, uh, as part of the flood we had last year, was submitted for 1.7 million for section 24 and 25. That covers, our, our engineers are telling us that that should address about 80% of the stormwater issue. So, the next year, you're gonna hear a lot of discussion about stormwater, uh, part of it, I probably mentioned to some of you, with LDU, we're in a discussion about creating a center for stormwater excellence. Uh, the stormwater is getting very interesting. City of Detroit is actually charging all of the commercial businesses for parking lots and non-areas. I gotta tell you, I don't know where they're getting the statutory authority to do that, because when Dearborn was tried doing that a few years ago, they, they got slapped, uh, by the courts and said, "You, you couldn't do it." DSW's doing things like giving credit to, uh, their customers by, for reducing the amount of sewer, uh, of stormwater going into the system, so. Look for street lighting and stormwater, uh, they're, they're on our agenda, and we've started on the street lighting, some of the foot lighting. There's two things happening in street lighting, there's two different consortiums that have been proposed. The Michigan Public Service Commission is proposing to raise the rates for different types of street lighting, to, which in essence, what some folks are saying, reduces the marketplace competitive advantage that LED lights have had. So, there are some things that I think that by the end of the year, you'll see a couple items move forward. I think stormwater's gonna move a little quicker, because Oakland County Water Resource Commission is setting up a committee to review their standards. Their standards have not been reviewed in a number of years, and a lot of us in this room think that the standards handicap older, first ring suburban communities, and there's a willingness on the county, uh, Water Resource Commission to maybe let some of those stormwaters, uh, issues. So, probably more of a response than you wanted, but those are two items that are on our work plan.
Yeah, the million dollars, was that just a fund, or was that earmarked for a specific?
We actually had it, it's a li, it was one of our funding sources for Evergreen Road, from what was originally presented to council, and we had always said, "We're gonna take some of this money out of the Metro Act money."
Yeah, that part was, it was, I just don't know how they missed it, or we missed it special today, when, when I went through the caper reports, I mean, not the caper, but for the budget commission, I, I don't totally look at sports services, because that is sort of like the omnibus, where everything falls in, and they don't have a lot of control over that. So, it was clearly budgeted on, it was clearly budgeted, and it has always been as part of Mr. Sharet's, um, breakdown of all the funds, that he wanted to go towards Evergreen Hills, not Evergreen Hills, Evergreen Road. Um, so, yes, that was always, it's a, the, the key thing was, is we had that money, we were saving it, and it had been, project, like I said, had been given up a long time ago, so it was like, "Okay, I keep stockpiling this money." So, we've been using it, actually, I think we used it left there, 'cause there's really not going to be about more than $140,000 left after this million. But that really was earmarked. We originally, the understanding was it could only be like, it was, we were very narrow-minded in what you can use it for, then we talked to the state, and the state said, "No, no, no, it can be used for anything in the road. It, it's right-of-way money, but you can use it as long as you're, you know, correcting the road." So, that kind of opened it up to, "Okay, well, we can," 'cause before it was simply, we were buying cherry pickers that were gonna be cut and trimmed and the trees are the right-of-way, we used it to buy the, replace the Dutch Elms that died, um, everything that was in truly just the right-of-way, and then it sort of opened up a couple of years, yeah, about, it was only about two or three years ago, and where they said, "No, your definition is too stringent, you can open that up wider." And so, now, we've been using it for, for that road purpose.
Okay, so the million dollars?
It was just a clerical error?
No.
Okay.
That, that, my question is, the million dollars is just a fund?
It's just a design, we know at the end of the year, we have all those restrictions, and I show you, this is for the equalization reserve, this is for, it's one of those, but it's truly restricted for our right-of-way purposes only. In other words, our designations, if you look at our, our report, our designations are restricted, but they're just sort of restricted by you. This has a legal restriction, so it truly is called in the caper restricted.
Okay.
So, if you were looking.
Maybe if I keep asking the question, in a different way?
Okay. I doubt it, but okay.
You don't understand what I'm trying to get at.
It is all in the general fund.
The million dollars was not designated for a specific?
No.
Project. It's more, uh, it's restricted for a certain thing, but it's, as it is right now, it's a fund. The reason I was asking that question is, if, for instance, the majority of it was designated to fix the streetlights down in the DDA area, we would have to rescind that?
No, no, no.
Project, and, and, uh, if you want to use it for something else.
It was never, it was never physically earmarked.
Okay.
Before, before project, nor was it ever budgeted.
Okay.
It did appear, not in nothing to do with streetlight, that the, when we were presenting the Evergreen Road project, one of our sources was a million dollars coming out of the Metro Act. And I wanna say that was presented to council?
Yeah.
December of 13, or se-
Yeah, somewhere around there. Around the time we were talking about how much money was left in LURF, and how much are we gonna have left to do this. So, again, to make it clear, you're right, the, the purpose of me segregating it was because unfortunately, people tell me and say, "Well, we've got this project we'd like to do, so why don't we hold this money?" But, again, the project never got to your, to the point where it would be to you to say, "Yes, we want this project."
Okay.
It was something that they said, "Well, this is something we'd like to do, so let's see if we can stockpile money to get, to get it up."
Okay.
So, that's what I did. And then when he went away, I'm like, "Well, then I know the project's gone, because no else has even noticed, knows about it." And so, um, it really is, it's earmarked for right-of-way purposes, had you, you're right, had you created a project, then I would have, I would have come back to you and said, "We're putting this project on hold, we need to transfer the money," but that never happens.
Okay, very, thanks.
What's the total amount of money you're for?
Well, it depends, can we, where are we at in terms of? Well, not a lot, not a lot in major streets, 'cause a lot of it is being, from our side of it, is going to be the water, really not the person that's keeping track of that. We have, I have a meeting with them that's coming up, because I need to know how much I have to transfer. I have not been able to have that meeting yet, with Lee and the, uh, other people involved, so I don't really have a dollar now for you, I can certainly get one to you, but it's really, it, most of it has been on the water side, and of course, it's, it's going through the state, and those bills come slow, so we're still kinda waiting.
That we'd like to know exactly what we've got to do, how much is being, how much is going to be, or is that?
Certainly can revise that.
Okay, anything else, counsel?
Yeah, do, uh, on the, uh, the recovered permit fees?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are we caught up with that yet, or are we still?
We're still working our way through, but we're in the experience of, I mean, we're in 20 questions.
We're still seeing some come through, but it's not a, it's not a, it's not as, going to be a large amount coming in through the rest of the, the time, is from, from what I've been told.
Now, are most of the ones that were recovered, uh, contractors have said, you know, or you can't find a contractor, or?
Well, we can't find people, that money goes to the state.
That goes to the state. So, basically, if you got your CVO, even if it was 20 years ago, we sent out letters, we sent out the check, if it comes back, we send it back to building to try to do some more due diligence to find them, and then, um, if it can, if we cannot find them, we issue it to the state under the name of the original person that pulled the program. If they did not get their CVO, if they did nothing, that is when we take the money. So, yeah.
Okay, so if they did not get a CVO?
So, if they didn't file, you're the one people that's.
These year, when we rewrote the ordinance, basically what we earned for administering the, the, of the service of help in getting people through the process, but the, the balk, Mr. Pierce, this was originally about six million?
Three, three point four.
Three, four million?
Three point four.
A big chunk of this has been returned to the original, uh, customer?
Mm-hmm.
And a big chunk has gone to the state, if those numbers the council's put out.
Good, okay.
Yeah, 'cause there was only four million total, and, and some of those deposits are not, so it's about three, three million.
Okay, and, uh, counsel, what's your?
Can I just comment on the, uh, the LURF? Keep in mind, the 2005 transportation bond, uh, that was refinanced after last year's budget, so you no longer need that LURF loan.
Yeah.
Am I saying that wrong?
Yes.
I'm saying it wrong, but we increased it to 3.9, you, you, when we refinanced the road bond, that brought in another 3.9 million that we didn't have when we prepared last year's budget.
You received four, almost four million dollars more in proceeds, because what you did is you had a 15-year bond, we had spent five, or we paid down five years of it, and when we refinanced it, we refinanced the 10 that we still had left, but then we put it out for another five years, so we collected another four million dollars to bond proceeds. There is, however, because of the deficit situation that major streets were in, in probably almost seven or eight, 10 years ago, there is still LURF obligation, that, what Major Street does pay back to LURF on an annual basis, so that does not go away. But there is additional money that are bond proceeds that will be spent this year, the next fiscal, I should say, or if, I can find that, they fall within the programs of this year's, of, of what the bond proceeds are for, 'cause there's projects, in each bond, um, official statement, it'll tell you what projects are available to use this money on. So, if we, if I find that there's money to be used, I can transfer it, be this transfer that we're doing today to the major streets, which will allow them to have more money. It's all, goes to major street, but it's just kind of an accounting thing that the bond proceeds have to show up on bond proceed account, and be transferred in as they use them, because of the fact that it's not only major, but it's local. So, I can't just say, "All this money is major streets," because it's not, it depends on what programs we're doing. So, it's going to be in one fund, then I will transfer at the end of the year, after I go through all the money, and say, "Okay, here's how much that major streets spent this year, this is how much local streets spent this year." And then, the next year will be the same thing. But if, by the time we get to, since it just happened, and we just got the bond proceeds, that's kinda why I don't have all the numbers, by the time July comes, I should have by the first or second week of July, all of that pulled together, and so I'll tell you how much is gonna be expended, how much they've encumbered, how much will be left. And then, it'll be, we still have another couple of series of bonds after we do this, 'cause we only did half of the bond money right now, so we'll be going out in another two or three years, once they spend the 40.
I do have a couple of questions. When we borrow money, do we pay ourself interest?
From LURF?
Mm-hmm.
For the most part, yeah, so you, it, it, in the past, you always did, it was always 6%, then we moved it to 3%, then there started to be this kind of slippery slope we got on, where they were transferring, and we didn't even borrow the money, we just gave it back, we just gave it away, which we've done, so we've been doing that. Um, but for the most part, if you wanna go historically, for most of the money that's in the, the LURF, there always is at least a 3% now.
Okay.
Interest. That's how, that's how the LURF, that's actually how the LURF has grown so much, because it was 6%, all the spec, every special assessment we ever did, the, the citizens didn't pay it upfront, we gave them 10 years, we paid all the costs, we charged them 6%. All of the LDFAs loans were always 6%, the TIFA loans, anybody that got loans were 6%. Actually, I'm probably gonna come back to you in the fourth quarter and ask if we can, the only people that are paying 6% right now is Parks and Rec, and quite frankly, they could use the help of the little alleviation of at least being reduced to 3%. So, that would be the only ones right now, they have a loan for both on the golf course and for, I think, for the delay. And so, those two, we can do them too, I mean, right now, but I think they're still at 6% and cover all the stuff.
Okay, I wonder how, if, if we went on a slippery slope, and, so we weren't following our own rules, I wonder if there's a, something official that we ought to do with, through the council, so that we make sure that we are, are fair to ourselves, so that, uh, we pay ourselves interest?
Yeah, I, I can tell you right now, Parks and Rec is, on the golf course worked on years ago, has two more payments, and you're paying 3% interest in the LURF?
And it may be.
When I, uh, when Mr. Pierce and I did the research on the history of the LURF, it goes back to 1983, and primarily money the city's loaned, and keep in mind, some of that period, interest rates were double digits, and, 'cause I don't think it was always 6%. I think there might have been a, a point where it was much higher, so.
Yeah.
So, may I, that's a, just, Mr. Pierce, so I'm clear, so no LURF money's going into roads? That's?
No LURF money currently is being transferred into the road project.
And I want counsel to hear that for, for a reason. And originally, when we did the Evergreen Road, I-
As a hedge, as a hedge, we did budget, 'cause we wanted to make sure that if, if the, the millage failed, we had enough money to cover all of our expenditures. So, the assumption was that we were going to do a transfer from LURF.
And then, my other question is, so the 2005 bond money, that 3.9?
Yeah, that was refinanced.
Did not commit at all of that, I mean?
Is it not that I'm aware of? That's the part that you have to-
Are the 43 million that came in from the first bond piece, plus that other four?
Currently, right now, the only thing that I've paid out of those bond proceeds is the bond issuance cost, that's the only thing I-
So, I just want a counsel to hear.
Have not charged.
We're not borrowing from LURF.
So, they've had enough money, right now, most, both funds have enough money to cover their expenses to date. The problem is, is one, there is a lag between how the state bills, so we're gonna get those now, coming up, I'm pretty sure, so then, we're gonna see the rush on the bills coming in. Plus, Ms. Roberts and I have been, you know, very diligently talking about, we need to cut, close earlier, and so we need departments to give their bills to us earlier, so that I can close earlier. So, we're going to be sending out a push pretty soon on that, to say, you know, "You need to tell your vendors, get your bills here, 'cause I can't be holding these books open till October, because you don't feel like billing." So, we should be, like I say, by the time July comes around, I should be in a good position to know what they've got, what they're, they can expect, because of course, I will talk to the department and ask them, "What do you expect?"
And to counsel, we first need to spend that '05 money first, then the, the part of the bond we issued earlier, and we've got certain obligations and timing.
They both have, um, I mean, usually, you're, you're, you never have to worry about arbitrage before three years, so. Um, so, basically, the issue is, though, I have to make sure, and this is my problem, this is what I'm gonna resolve with Lee and them, is that I have to make sure I know what projects have been put in the OS for the 2005, which projects are in the new one, and if they've spent stuff on that project, then I certainly can transfer that money. If they didn't do any work on that project, or somehow haven't set, let that contract, then the money will still be there till next year, until they get the project out. But we will have it spent before three years. More than one.
All right, can you come up there as quick as possible?
If you please. Thank you.
All right, and you have a, uh, agenda, is the request to adopt the Freedom of Information to be given by, I, don't you, am I?
Yeah. City, the, the, the council, mayor, um, the Freedom of Information Act, I'm sure all of you are familiar with, you get FOIA requests to your departments all the time. In January of this year, uh, they came out with Public Act 563. Basically, what happens now is that nothing has changed as far as, you know, FOIA, the information that you review, what can be disclosed, what cannot be disclosed, however, the legislature decided now that they wanted to have four, uh, that the public will be able to receive when they, um, turn in FOIA requests. So, for example, we have the Business Public Summary of FOIA Procedures and Guidelines. This is basically explaining the FOIA process, uh, the things that we've already done very well here in the city of South, uh, Southfield, excuse me, the time limits, um, and the things that we are already familiar with. The only difference now is that if I come in and I said, you know, "I wanna make a FOIA request for, uh, all the violations for tall grass," when I- The only difference now is that if I come in and I said, you know, I wanna make a FOIA request for all the violations for tall grass, when I submit that, you are going to give me a copy. You, in the city of Southville, coming to the city clerk's office, will give me a copy of this Written Public Summary of the FOIA Procedures and Guidelines. There's also a more detailed one that someone can also receive. This just goes into more details again, explaining the procedures, the time limits, the positive requirements, your avenues for appeals. Finally, because we do charge when we do this, we have to have also placed an itemization form that shows the fees and how we're charging them. So again, it's the same thing we're always, we've always done, it's just that it has to be on this form and we have to provide this form to the requesters. Also, one of the things is if we have the internet presence, we have to have these accessible on the internet. So if we do not have these forms available and on the internet as of July first, we can not charge for FOIA requests. So that's pretty much in a nutshell of what we had to do by July first. We just have to have these documents, the itemization form showing how we're charging, which is what we've always done, and shows the positive requirements and things like that. This is a more detailed document of the procedures and guidelines. And then the Written Public Summary that explains to someone who says, you know, I'm not gonna go look this up, can you just tell me what I need to do and this is what's included. So the legislature said we must have this in place by July first and we cannot collect FOIA fees. So that is what we're presenting tonight, but again, nothing major has changed as far as once we start the procedure and how we were doing. It really comes down to showing what we're charging, how much time we spend, we have to show that now in these forms.
Council, a question?
Yeah, one of the things that Eric says, that if someone sends an email request and it happens to go into spam or the junk mail, that the FOIA manager only looks in the, has to look at it at least once a month.
Of course.
Why, you know, that's our problem. I mean, we set the filters for what we accept. And if we set the filter so tight that it bounces, or it goes into the junk or the spam, it doesn't bounce. If it bounces, then the person that sent it in knows that it didn't go in. But if it doesn't come back to the, to the person that sent it in, they expect that it was received, but it's in spam and junk. Why are we waiting a long month before we interrogate the spam and the junk filter, or the data?
Actually, that's discretionary at this point and we'll probably discuss it more. I think that's what they just said, say, you know, it's just coming into spam again as a government entity. We're doing other things, so they didn't want us to say, hey, as it comes to spam, you know, we're gonna get to it right away. I think they still want to say, you know, we're functioning as your government, we're doing our duty as your government agency. But at the same time, you know, when FOIA requests come in, it's not something especially that goes into spam, then we're gonna check and then you gotta come back and say, hey, you didn't respond fast. And I think the legislature was trying to give municipalities, I should say, the benefit of the doubt that we will serve the public, but at the same time, we can't, you know, take away someone and say, hey, you better go check this spam folder more frequently.
Why not?
Well, if I can just answer that, first of all, FOIAs are our office and we have not experienced any problems going into spam. For the most part, they always get either my email or the deputy's email. I do check my spam every day, every other day, and I have never had a FOIA done themselves.
Okay.
A lot of these FOIAs are, they're repeat people, I mean, for the most part, a lot of our requests, they're predominantly all building and I think once building, if things online, it would be a lot easier. Unfortunately, there were some municipalities that were abusing the process. Here in the city of Southville, I think we do a fair testing. We address FOIAs in a timely manner and do an excellent job. Unfortunately, with this new ruling though, departments have to be aware, Mr. Moore, this is where I hope we're gonna have training. They're gonna have to start putting in the numbers for their time, you know, the formula for how much to charge has become more complicated. And while we're just the paper shufflers, you know, I can't just assume, you know, someone's wages etc., etc. is what it is. So HR is gonna probably have to put a scale online just to make it easy for everyone, so it's like a one stop shop where we can all just go.
Yeah, because it says that it's the least expensive person that's capable of doing the FOIA interrogation regardless of who does it.
Right, but it also includes benefits and everything like that.
Right.
And I can't determine that, that's from HR. So they have recommended that something be put online, so every individual person who may be responding can go online, figure out what their benefit calculation is. Still in this four page sheet, which by the way, we're not looking at, we have to comply with it. And it's just, it's a lot more complicated. So I've done a great job trying to simplify it, but we understand that, but it's gotta be everyone in the city, because we're just only one department.
Sure. It seems to me it would be that the easiest thing to do is for each department, is take the, well, this is gonna be a general statement. Take the least expensive person and calculate their benefits and it would be one number. So that if it's, you know, if they get paid, you know, fourteen dollars an hour plus benefits, might be sixteen dollars an hour. And just put sixteen dollars on the, you know, for the, as one number rather than say fourteen dollars plus, you know, two dollars for benefits, because that makes it a lot more complicated.
Well, but sometimes there are different scenarios where the lowest paid person of that department cannot perform that duty. In a test would be the more expensive person, so it just depends on the request. There's a lot of different variables when it comes to a FOIA.
That's what went through my mind when I said, I stopped and said, it's gonna be a terrible thing.
Yeah, yes, we wish it would be that easy.
The other, the other question that I had was, for someone that doesn't have a computer or is not computer literate, one of the, what it says in here is, if somebody calls in, you can say, you say to them, I'm gonna refer you to this, you know, our website and you find it on our website. But if a, if a, let's say a senior, a real senior, has no computer or is not computer literate, it seems to me like just telling them it's on our website and you can get it for free is not very helpful.
Well, there is, if someone wants to come in, they can get the form, they can get everything if they come in also. So if they don't have access to a computer, we still are required to keep everything in paper form. At the city clerk's office, we're gonna assume that we're gonna make a central location for the form. So if they don't have access to a computer, then we still have to provide those forms to the newspaper.
Okay.
We present it here.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
How many people in the city in general are, I guess, capable of handling FOIA requests? Is it mostly through the clerk's office or do each department have a certified person?
Well, I mean, years ago, council designated the city clerk as a FOIA coordinator. So the FOIAs come into the city clerk's office, whether we buy a fax, buy an email, buy the comments. And then we basically are the paper shufflers. So according to the law, we have five days to send a letter out to, and I'm just saying, the building department. And they have five days to respond back to us. If we don't get a letter by the fifth day, then we can ask for a ten day extension. Every department in the city can receive a FOIA or request, and sometimes there's multiple departments that receive it.
But is that your question? So each, I guess, in more detail, each department has someone who's assigned to handle the FOIA request?
Kind of sorta, yes, but it just, again, depends that the building department for bonds, we need one of the bond person. Where there might be another situation, we need to talk to the actual building director or the bond person's not gonna be able to sign. So, and sorry, I'm picking on the building department, but, you know, so it just depends on the situation where it goes, and it could be anyone.
It depends on the request and what they're looking for.
Yeah, what, basically what they're looking for.
I just, just wanted, the building department's probably the number one entity for FOIAs. And it's usually anyone involved in a real estate transaction doing their due diligence and such. One of the things we've talked about within the building department is if we did somehow move more of our records to a digital system and then allow, and train the development community how to access that from a remote location. It's primarily the environmental consultants, the phase one, two grand, you know, part of the fee, but it consumes a lot of time and resources. We understand that we've gotta be doing these things out in the open and in the sunshine. But it is an expense that even with the cost recovery, doesn't begin to recuperate the true cost on the organization. The other thing, the other type of FOIA is when people are on these fishing expeditions. And those are the ones where they cast these huge nets for our police department, the amount of things that have to be acted, it is a major effort. But I think some point in the next year, if we could move the building department and planning and engineering, I think we could knock off a huge amount of FOIAs and the clerical support necessary. And perhaps even move that to where people are online and are paying to review it or something. And we're gonna look, we're looking at options, the first thing is getting our records into a digital format that can maybe increase the budget.
Can we set up a recovery on our fee issue? Where does, where does the cost recovery go? To which department? Did we go back to whoever did the work or is it a fund, or we put it all in one space?
It's, I believe it shows up as a line item revenue and clerk's office.
And it's not a super, for the amount of work we do, it's not a big line item, which I could say it paid a hundred percent for a person.
It's only cost recovery, it's not, we don't make profit. It's only cost recovery.
Right.
We don't make, we can't make profit.
No, we don't. We actually subsidize this.
Yeah.
We don't make any, any, you know, we recoup some of our costs, but not nearly our total costs.
Thank you.
Thank you.